Second agenda item was to talk about replacing our two external members of this audit committee, our two community members, of which you were one, Kate Wilkinson, right?
Yep.
And how long did you serve on there?
Um, I think it was a year and a half, maybe.
So, um, I had a chance to, to talk briefly this afternoon with Shanice Clark and Jamal Tibbs from our engagement team. And we're gonna come up with a very brief set of questions, like three questions or something for a template for people who might be interested. And then they are going to help us do some outreach. And ideally, we'll look for somebody who's got some kind of auditing experience, or at least, you know, public sector oversight experience of some sort. And the second member doesn't need to have any of those kind of qualifications. And then we'll look to bring somebody on board by, within the next month, because at our next audit committee meeting in December, we're gonna be going over, we're gonna be brainstorming and going over any proposed topics that we have for next year's slate of audits. So we really want to make sure that we have those outside members in place before then. So Andrew, do you have any, any thoughts on this topic? You probably are a great person to do outreach as well, because you know those kind of people who like those kind of things.
Those, those kind of oddity people?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, yeah, no, I don't have any thoughts beyond what you sort of put out there. I'm happy to send it around to folks and see if we can recruit somebody. What's, remind me what you just said, the requirement, one of the people has to have actual on the ground auditing experience?
Yeah, Janice, correct me if I'm wrong, but those aren't requirements. We just thought that that would be an ideal scenario. Janice, do you have anything to add, or Mary Catherine?
Yeah, the white paper from the Council of Great City Schools does recommend that one of the community members have some sort of financial experience or auditing experience. But it's not a foregone conclusion that they have to, but it would definitely add a lot of value to have a community member who has some sort of financial experience. And that would be a preference for me as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess I'm separating that a little bit financial from auditing experience. I hate to get into the weeds of, you know, accountants versus budget versus auditors, but this is sort of curious. Yeah, no, I'm happy to send it around to folks.
I mean, to me, I think sort of any kind of public sector oversight would be beneficial. So I'm gonna draft those questions, and Andrew, I'll send them to you and to Gary, see what you guys think and what you have to add, and then we can all get to work on finding some good people.
Great. You're muted, Amy.
And Director Hollins-
Sorry, I was, what'd you say, Blazam?
I was saying Director Hollins is here now.
Oh, good, 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 good. Hi, Gary.
Hi.
Great. Gary, we skipped over the first agenda item, because we didn't want you to miss that. And we just finished a very brief conversation about our process for recruiting two external members for this committee. So I'm gonna draft just about three questions that we'll put out to community members when they ask, when we're asking them to express their interest. I'll send those to you and Andrew.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I heard, I heard the conversation. I don't know if I was, I just wasn't maybe on as a panelist, but I was hearing this stuff.
Do you have anything you want to add to that, or any thoughts about that process?
No, I think that's good.
Okay, great. So we will move on then to what was our first agenda item, which is an overview of the Office of the Internal Performance Auditor. And Gary, just for your background, I have never served on the audit committee before. And Andrew has a couple years back. So we're, we're kind of starting a fresh together.
Awesome, awesome. I've never been on the audit committee either, so I'm with you.
Well, be-
Janice, take it away.
So excited. Because this is very exciting stuff.
And Janice, one of the best parts of the audit committee is your unbounded enthusiasm for all things audit. It is a joy to be whole.
Oh, thank you. I do love it. I am, I have a presentation, and I'm working on sharing it. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties. I apologize. If you are in Board Books, you can open it, the OIPA overview. So if you want to open it in Board Books, that might be more efficient than me trying to figure this out.
Is that what you're trying to present, is that OIPA overview?
Yeah.
That's, that's fine. We can do that. We can all do that, right?
Yep, I've got it.
Okay. So, um, I want to tell you a little bit about Office of Internal Performance Audit. So the, okay, so our mission and our purpose. So PPS Performance Auditing is conducted by Mary Catherine and myself. It is an objective and systematic examination of evidence to provide an independent assessment of government organization, a program, activity, or a function. The goal of the, goal of the audit is to improve program effectiveness, improve quality of service delivery, provide useful, objective, and timely information, strengthen administrative and management systems and controls, facilitate decision making by parties with responsibility, responsibility for oversight, or initiating corrective actions, and improve student and district-wide. The objectives of audits are gonna vary vastly depending on the topic, but generally, the topic, you know, the purpose of an audit is to improve accountability and performance at PPS. Roles and responsibilities are authority and responsibilities. We have a charter and also a board policy. And both of those things are, give us the authority and identify our responsibilities. Independence and objectivity. I do have a slide for this one. It is really important. So the, myself, the Senior Internal Performance Auditor, is hired, evaluated, and may only be removed by the Board of Education. So you guys are all the boss of me. Reporting directly to the Board of Education is meant to ensure that the work of the Office of Internal Performance Audit is independent, impartial, and objective, so stakeholders can really trust through audit results and recommendations.
And Janice, can you remind us what the, the timing has been for your performance evaluations?
Yeah, so my performance evaluation is due each June 30th. So we just wrapped up a performance evaluation for myself, the last year's audit committee completed that. And you guys will be responsible for completing that in June of 2022.
And then you do Mary Catherine's?
I do.
Okay. And can you send us all the template that was used last year for your evaluation? We received it as a full board, but if you could send that again to the three of us, that'd be helpful.
Very well. So next, I just want to point out that we do follow auditing standards. It is called the Yellow Book, commonly referred to as the Yellow Book because it's yellow. It's the GAGAS, the Government Accountability Office, issues generally accepted government auditing standards. And so we do adhere to those. They're very rigorous auditing standards. So we do follow those. Then, the, we have some key performance indicators that the audit committee last year looked at and approved for us. So we have three performance indicators. The first one is the number of audits completed per FPE. So we do try, our target is one and a half audits each, so that would be about three audits a year. We, our second key performance indicator is the implementation rate of our recommendations. And our target is 75%. Then our third one is the rate of management agreement with recommendations. We have a target of 75% there as well. We have a couple of information performance measures that is kind of like the data behind. So we will provide that, like the average audit hours and the number of audits completed. And then we also have an audit feedback survey that we are really close to deploying. We have all the questions. We just need to get it put into a survey so it can be sent out. We did talk about-
Like to all the stakeholders that you've interviewed, once an audit is concluded?
Yes. And I won't go to all of them. We, sometimes we talk to a lot of different people for an audit, but the primary people who were involved in the audit, like the department manager, the audit liaison, if it's different, or whatever chief is over in the department that we're looking at, stuff like that. So it will go out. But we have all the questions that we discussed with the audit committee last year. If you're interested in them, let me know. And I'd be happy to go over them with you and explain why we thought these questions were the best. But the good thing is, is if you have some ideas for additional questions, we will welcome your feedback if we can update it, you know, as needed. So feel free to provide us feedback on pretty much anything we do. So that's an overview of the office, what we do. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody?
Director Hollins, I'm really disappointed that I'm not able to meet you in person. Because, you know, normally asking to talk a lot about auditing, I try to at least meet people in person first.
And, and Janice, do you know that Director Hollins was previously on the board of MESD? So I'm sure was familiar. They had an internal performance auditor, independent performance auditor there, right? Yeah. So Gary's very familiar with the function.
Well, I am gonna send you an email, Director Hollins, to request a meeting. It would be really great if we could get something scheduled, since possible.
Oh, anytime. I walk and talk. So anytime in the mornings, I am available to walk. I'm at Fernhill Park, pretty much every day from, well, depends on what time the meetings start, but anywhere from 6:00 AM to, well, now it ain't six, it's too dark, but anywhere between noon and noon, I'm available.
Got it. Do you guys have any questions about the work we do? Want any more details about any of the areas?
We're glad, we're glad to have you. We'll get, we'll get on to the meat of the matter and talk about what kinds of things we might want to start to audit. But before we do that, we have an audit that has just concluded, and that is, has been finalized and will be sent on to the board after our discussion today on our use of PECARD. And this was an, this is a topic that was identified by the prior audit committees and was approved by the board for this year's slate of topics. So hopefully, you guys have all had a chance to take a look at that. At least go through the executive summary and, and see what their findings were, which I think there were already some, Emily Corte, I see you're on this call, but I think it's fair to say that there were already some process improvements that were, were being put in place even during the audit itself, just as that, you know, we brought that, that department back to full staffing and all that. But this is a pretty clean audit. So why don't you guys tell us about it?
Great. So I do have a presentation, again, with some technical difficulties. It's not letting me do this. So if you open up the presentation in Board Books, if you don't mind, sorry, this is not working very well.
No, it's easy for us. No big deal.
So if you open the presentation and go to the, the third slide for the summary, that's where we'll start. Director Constantine kind of gave the background already that it was already approved. So the audit objective of the PECARD audit, the objective of the audit was to assess the adequacy of internal controls over the school district's PECARD program, and determine whether the PECARD activity is compliant with applicable policies, procedures, administrative directives, and best practices. The results of the audit, based on the results of the audit, we found the school district's internal controls over PECARD usage are adequate to maintain the overall integrity of the PECARD program. The audit did not identify any evidence of intentional fraud, but did identify some opportunities for improvement and some instances of noncompliance. The audit report provided 13 recommendations, and the Purchasing and Contracting Department agreed with 11 of those recommendations and partly agreed with the remaining two. So, which is really awesome. It's great. And so, would you like me to go through each of the recommendations with you guys? Okay, so. Absolutely. So recommendation number one, it is, we recommend the PECARD, or we recommend the training manuals. Pardon? Um, it's actually on the, so it's on the executive summary in the audit report, on page five. And the recommendations are listed about halfway, start halfway down the page, found it? Okay, good. Love them. So I believe they're working on my report writing skills. So the executive summary for this report is actually really good. So if you read the executive summary, you will get a really great idea of what the report includes. Okay, so number one, we recommend the P, we recommend P card training, oh my gosh, sorry. The P card training modules, the P card update and best practices, and P card budget holder review and sign off training be required annually for all P card and budget holders. So implementation is complete on this one, and they started requiring it annually for the P card holders. But the part that they disagreed with, or partly disagreed with, I will let Emily chat since she's here, but it was more to do with the budget holder training and not the P card holder training. But Emily?
Even in light of being familiar with the other trainings that Emily's referring to?
So what you got to was the heart of the issue is, are the budget holders having proper oversight? Well, how do we evaluate that? We evaluate that based off of their review and sign off of the transactions. And if you go and the report to page 12, if you, there is a procedure at the bottom, and one of the things that we tested was to determine whether the budget holders are completing the required monthly review and sign off in works by the 12th of the month. And what we found is, some instances, you can see in the results, where it wasn't done timely. And so it's really hard for us to say that they're doing it without the evidence of them doing it timely, which is all marked off in, in works when they go in and they sign off. So I actually, I mean, I did all the trainings, but, you know, the purchasing and contracting department created, I reviewed them all. I think that they're great. They do provide almost duplicative information in several different places, along with the guides and all the other additional information that is provided on the P card program website, which is a great resource. It's just not happening as timely as it should. So our recommendation was to require the training annually, to have an annual refresher, but I don't necessarily know that that would work.
I mean, it's not, that's not a directly correlated to their timely submission of review. What were you gonna say, Director Hollins? Sorry.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I was, you know, when, it seems like it's not the issue of mostly of needing more training, but to actually do the process.
Right.
And that's what, I mean, just kind of what I've been noticing with the district in general, is that we have processes, but they're not being followed. So I think it's more of a, how do we, how do we entice, or how do we enforce the use of the processes versus changing, changing things to, to match up what we're not, what we're not doing, you know? So I think that's, it seemed like that's more of a piece and go with, going with what she was saying, that she don't know if it's gonna even make a big difference, because it's not the training piece, it's just the process that they're not following. So I think we need to focus on why is the process not being followed?
And, and Janice and Mary Catherine, somewhere in here, there's a recommendation for, like, raising the level of infraction when that's not done. Can you point us to where that was written, that I'm remembering, where it says that there will be, when these are not done in a timely way, there will be some inner, you know, somebody will-
Yes.
-take note of it and take action?
So that is on report page 12.
Okay.
And that's associated with recommendation number seven. And this one is, really gets to the root issue, and management has agreed with this recommendation. So I'm not concerned at all about their partial disagreement with the other one. But the recommendation here is to, the P card infraction table be updated to include a level four infraction as the budget holder's failure to timely review and sign off on the P card holder's monthly transaction reconciliation, and identify, implement, and enforce appropriate disciplinary actions. So if, in the report, if you go to the very back, I put the infraction table in the report as an appendix, which is on page 16. So you can see in there, this is the infraction table that the P card program enforces. So if you have this type of issue, well, this is, is it your first occurrence or your second occurrence? And then what are the results of having these occurrences? Sometimes it's retraining, or there's all kinds of results. But one of the infraction on the current table is not associated with the budget holder's review and sign off. So we're recommending that they add that as an infraction on their table, and identify and implement the, and enforce appropriate disciplinary actions. So it could be whatever they decide would be the appropriate disciplinary actions.
And it goes to their manager. That seems to me like a more relevant way to address the problem. What it, what do you guys think?
I had a question on this. Do these infractions, it looks like they build, right, in terms of seriousness? So I was just adding level four for failure to sign off. Is that, am I reading this table right?
So these are, this table is cardholder infraction. So this is misuse of a card, failure to reconcile, at worst, fraud and abuse, that's tier three. We don't see that. But usually, it's failure to reconcile timely, or failure to attach appropriate documentation, or in some cases, failure to follow internal district policy. So yes, first infraction, there's one set of consequences. They do it again during the same fiscal year. There's a second set of consequences. The easy part in dealing with infractions for cardholders is that we can take away their card, as the, you know, turn off their card, mandate retraining, and eventually take away a card, which can have implications for people's ability to do their job. The hard thing with budget holders is they're not the cardholders. So there's no, there's no card to take away. So it's a little trickier to enforce sort of penalties on a budget holder's failure to review. What we have been doing, and what we will document as part of the budget holder failure to review infraction process, is we have a group of us who meet HR CFO's office, and purchasing and contracting, we meet and review the infractions monthly. We look at the repeats. We have the assistant to the CFO calling the people who have failed to approve on time and reminding them. And then we have the discussions with HR of whether some supervisors need to be brought in. So we'll formalize that process.
The bottom line is, it goes to the budget holder's supervisor. So it could and should be a consideration in their own performance evaluation.
Right.
So that kind of gets them where they live, right?
Definitely.
Do we have any more questions about this? I'm, I'm inclined to concur with that management response, that that other layer is not necessarily needed. What do the other committee members think?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Same here.
Hey, Amy, not, not to put you on the spot, can you, because I'm the one who's been on the audit committee before, so I should remember this. But do, can you, but Janice probably knows. Do these, remind me the process for these? Are we, do we review these audits, and then do they go to the board to be reviewed? Or is this, is this, they just come to the audit committee and then are provided just for information to the board? I just, I don't remember the process.
I think we recommend or don't recommend approval or an adoption of the, the audit and the recommendations, and then the full board votes. Is that, that's, is that right, Janice?
No, the board doesn't vote. There's no voting. It's just accepting. So I think that the last time, there was a resolution to accept the health and safety checks-
Got it, got it.
I think there was. There wasn't?
It was on the consent agenda.
I think there was, there wasn't, it was on the consent agenda. No?
I don't believe it was, but I could be wrong.
Roseanne, can you check that out?
We'll work that out. Yeah, we'll work it out, but.
Yeah. But we, it's presented to the full board with our recommendation or not our recommended. Roseanne?
I don't believe so.
Well, I, I think, Janice, we talked about this and I think it should be because I don't think it's enough for just the audit committee to take these because these are, this is our employee and this is our, you know, responsibility as a board, um, to oversee the work of the, the independent auditor. And I think there should be, you know, high level of visibility for the full board.
Yeah. So Amy, just to be clear, you're saying you do think that, that there should be a presentation of the audit?
I do.
To the board.
I do.
I, 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 I think so too. Um, I guess I wanted to be a little careful in terms of, of it is really their presentation. Just as we were talking, I was thinking like, like it would not, management needs to be able to respond, right? The way management responds and, and, and it's not actually the board's job to either sort of agree or disagree with management's response. I think we could, as a result of management's response, direct the superintendent to do something different. I know I'm splitting hairs here a little bit, but when I sort of heard you say, do we, do we sort of agree with management's response on this? And I think really the reality is, is as a, as a committee and as a board, what we, what we're doing is reviewing this. If, if we disagreed with management's response, then as part of accepting the audit, we might want to include something that says, and we direct management to do something different. Does that make sense?
I look at it a little bit differently because we can direct the, the auditor. So we could say, you know, like in this case, oh, the management response does not believe that this one, you know, aspect of the recommendation is necessary. And we could say, but we do believe it's necessary. And so we do want to include that full recommendation that was made by the auditor regardless of, you know, the management response, right?
Yes, it's already included. We're getting really, we're getting a little.
Right, right, right. You're right, you're right.
But, but, but yeah, and I guess I would actually be nervous if we were telling Janice either to, to, to change something in the audit, because again, it's getting back to that independence and objectivity. She, she is our employee, but, but again, we want, we want our auditors to be doing their own work. And then, and then again, the, the board can sort of, can sort of accept it or make changes to it. But, but I would want to be careful that we're not sort of saying, hey, change this recommendation. You know what I'm saying?
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I think maybe I misspoke, not change the recommendation, but like, I believe that we can, we could say, let's eliminate this aspect that the, the auditor proposed because we had discussion, we heard the management response and we collectively agreed that that piece seemed like an independent, like an unnecessary step. Or you just leave it in and what?
So you two, you guys have not accepted, not voted audits.
Okay.
Audits you have accepted and maybe the, uh, no, 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 not even an, not an internal auditor have been, I think the, um, the, the audit, the financial audit, there's, and then I'm sure you even, you even vote to accept it. So I can't think of a situation that you guys have done that.
So we just present it. We just present a completed external independent report and we don't.
But you do vote, you vote on what audits that you are.
Yes, yeah.
That we're going to go forward with, yeah. And, and so Amy, what I would recommend, so, so this is a great example on this one. Um, our auditor made a recommendation about training. Management has responded and, and, and I think that's, that's the way the process is supposed to work. We, we as a board now, we're, we're hearing this in committee and then, and then, you know, we'll, it'll, it'll go to the full, full board just for presentation. I wouldn't want to change anything that's in there right now.
Yeah.
If as a board, we decided, actually, we do want folks to do this, this budget training every year. That's when we as a board could direct the superintendent and say, hey, we saw your management response, we actually want you to do it. Or if we agree with the management response, then we don't need to do anything because management has already said,
Right.
this is our response to it. So I, I think, I think, you know, I agree with you. I agree with management's response and I, I think that's, that's great. I think, I think we're, we're good. If we disagree with management's response, it's, it's a longer conversation with staffs.
Got it. Gary, where are you on that general way of looking at things?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to learn the whole process of the committee piece and the going to the board piece. And so I'm just, and I might go back a little bit. So from what I'm hearing is what Andrew is saying is that we can hear the audit report. We can, they can report the audit to, we can report it to the board, make a presentation to the board. If it was something that we wanted to change, we can direct the superintendent to change it as a board. Um, if it wasn't nothing that we wanted to change and nothing happens and it just goes where? Like what happens with that information?
Janice can actually talk, if, if, if there are no changes, uh, I mean, what, what essentially management's doing, and this is a great example. They're sort of agreeing with all, all 13, with just a couple tweaks on a couple of them. Um, and then I, I believe, Janice, you'll be doing follow-ups, right? In the future to sort of, to sort of go back and see, did, did in fact, uh, management implement all of the recommendations as they said they would?
Right.
You're a little far away, so I can't see if you're nodding.
I am, yes. Um, so policy does allow the auditors to revisit the topics in the form of a follow-up audit to see if there was implementation of the recommendations. Um, we haven't gotten there yet because we haven't gotten that far in our auditing process yet. But, um, I am excited to do some follow-up in the future. So in theory, if the report as is, if we were to be following up on this, we would ask, you know, did you implement this recommendation? What can I see as evidence? And we would, we would have an opportunity to consider whether or not we would like to reissue the recommendation to have an annual training or not. Maybe we don't reissue it, maybe we agree and whatever they're doing addresses the, addresses the heart of the recommendation. And so we would say everything's great, even though they partially disagreed. What they did was covered the issue and moving on.
Okay, so, so since they are agreeing kind of to the recommendations that we're talking about, and even you so said, we don't know if having an extra training will even work because it's more of a follow-through process than having another training. So if we're saying, okay, we're going to just present this to the board and then we just, um, go back and then you'll follow up to see if those issues have been corrected or been addressed. And if they haven't, then you'll bring it back to the committee or back to the board. And then we can make recommendations or changes from at that point. Is that kind of the, kind of what I'm hearing how, how it should work?
I know. So in the follow-up report, uh, report to the board and the audit committee on status, like the expectation, did they implement it and is it adequate? Does it cover the, the root issue? Um, and if it doesn't, then I would reissue recommendations or, you know, say what the implementation is not adequate, um, and maybe there should be some different recommendations. But, uh, that would be the opportunity to assess whether or not, whether or not whatever they did is adequate cover the root issue of, um, the issue, right?
The issue. I got you, I got you. Yeah, then I'm, then I'm good then too then.
Uh, my thoughts are foggy.
Do you want to just go into the other area where there was just a slight, um, difference of opinion?
This is a really great one for, um, talking about because, um, it's a great nuance that they identified here. So number 10, if you're in the audit report, it's on page six. Um, so recommendation number 10 is we recommend the P card program transition to a risk-based P card transaction review procedure that includes a thorough and complete review of all high-risk transactions. So management has partly agreed with this and, um, is Emily still on?
Yes.
Oh, there she is. Okay. So, um, we, what I did is I shared with the P card program the testing attributes that we did for our, um, audit and gave them, you know, some ideas of how to identify high-risk transactions. And I'll let, um, Emily speak to the response. But they liked the idea of a risk-based, but they didn't necessarily like the attributes that I tested for. And they think that they have attributes, which I agree with. I wish I could recommend giving a list of every single attribute, but you know, I was trying to be generous, but they have a lot of attributes that they feel strongly about, which I think is great. As long as it's more of a risk-based, um, review instead of trying to review all of the P card transactions. Because right now that is their goal is to review all P card transactions, which when you think about the numbers, um, it's way too many to actually do a thorough and complete review. So instead of just reviewing at a high, you know, actually pick transactions that are risk-based and then test them for all the attributes instead of a high-level review on all. Hopefully that differentiation makes sense, which I think we're totally in agreement on. It's just the attributes that I think that, um, they want to pick their own, which I'm super excited about. They should.
Yeah, um, we, we are excited about formalizing our process that we've sort of moved to as a matter of necessity anyway. Because as Janice said, you know, she lives here 26,000 to 46,000 transactions a year. We have a full-time P card auditor who works under Stephen Hirai. Stephen's here, he's a P card program manager. Um, but she can't thoroughly review 5,000 or more transactions, um, among reviewing all the documentation that come with. So, um, in a sense, we already have a process to identify some of our higher risk, uh, transactions, high-dollar transactions, transactions involving food, which has been an, uh, an issue highlighted in the Secretary of State audit. And we put in, uh, in place, uh, new policy, really strict guidance around that. Um, and so we are in agreement in really formalizing that process and, um, formalizing what we're doing. And if I could have Stephen, um, speak a little bit more about why, uh, because he, he had dubbed our P card auditor met uh, with Janice and went through her recommendations and there are parts of her recommendations that I'm sure they'll incorporate, but why we kind of wanted to go a slightly different route, including focusing on some of the issues that are not so much fraud-based, uh, but, uh, compliance with PPS policies as well. So, uh, Stephen, do you want to talk a little more about that?
Oh yeah, sure, definitely. Um, yeah, so.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet everybody. It's good to see everybody tonight. Um, yeah, so after going through this audit process with Janice and Mary Catherine, um, they provided us with their initial models, uh, that they used to kind of gauge where we were within our program. Um, one thing that they identified, which we agreed with, was that we need to, rather than look at as many transactions as we possibly can, uh, identify certain categories, um, individuals that we know are at higher risk. Do, do more transactions have higher dollar limits? Um, those sorts of things and restrict it to going through a set criteria. Um, and, you know, as Emily mentioned, we definitely would be looking at meals and gifts. Um, we would also bring in some of the Secretary of State, um, recommendations, like using the Benford curve. Cause that in the model that, um, Mary Catherine and, and Janice used, it actually pulled out a few things that, uh, were reoccurring transactions that were legitimate transactions, but we would not have otherwise found. Um, but we definitely do want to, to formalize a process rather than just going down a checklist of, of items that we think are potential risks.
So it sounds to me like conceptual agreement basically on this recommendation.
Absolutely. I think so. I think this is a good example of, you know, of a conversation that internal auditors can have to add value to the work. Like it's a conversation and we talk through it and, um, ultimately the end result may end up being something even better than what I thought it could be with the initial recommendation because a lot of their ideas are great. Um, and one of the reasons why we didn't include some of those testing, um, attributes is because we actually took the benefit of reviewing all of the Secretary of State's audit work papers. So the things that they tested for, I was intentional on not testing for, because I wanted to look for other things. So if they're bringing back in some of those attributes, it's actually a win all across the board.
Can you explain the Benford curve?
Um, no, I, I, it is a, it's a testing strategy, um, for potential identification of fraudulent transactions. It's very detailed and I couldn't off the top of my head, but I would be happy to send you an email on that.
I'll, I'll, I'll look, I'll look it up on Wikip, I'll look it up on Wikipedia. I just hadn't heard.
How do you spell that?
B E N F O R D, Benford.
Okay. Um, I think, um, you know, unless anybody has any questions about the other recommendations, um, I think we don't need to go through them one by one. You guys have anything else about?
No, I would say, I, I thought it was a, I mean, it was a very thorough audit and the recommendations got into the weeds, I think appropriately so, and, and, and hit on some key issues. I, I think also the takeaway that, you know, that at a high level, I, you know, I think the, the program is running really well. And, and it, you know, it seems like there are, you know, definitely errors for improvement as there are everywhere. And, and I, yeah, no, I thought overall it was a good audit and I thought management's response was thorough and, um, good as well.
Gary, any thoughts? All right. Um, okay, so let's move on to our next agenda item, which is future audit topics. And so we have a couple of, um, prospective audits that have been queued up and, uh, approved by the board, um, for consideration. The last time we, we looked at a slate, um, a couple of them, the, um, the ACH audit that we'll hear a little bit more about in a bit, um, kind of bumped, um, maybe some of these prospective audits in our order because that was something that arose that was very topical in terms of these bank transfers and the potential for, um, hacking or fraudulent activity. And so that was something that we agreed that we wanted to do urgently and make sure that we're well protected. So, um, kind of bumped a couple of the other, uh, ideas, particularly the, the student activities funds audit. So, um, Janice, do you want to walk us through what we have on the docket? What we have discussed already for consideration and then we can do a little more open brainstorming?
Yes, so right now, um, in the document that you guys have in board books called the status update, if you do open that, you see a list of all of the audits that are currently on our agenda. So the first one is the P card, which we're wrapping up on, um, with the report today. The ACH audit, we, we did an initial report on that, but there were two pieces that the district hadn't restarted yet. So we have completed the payment of those final two processes. And so that report will be ready for you guys in December. Um, the audit that really threw a kink in things was the health and safety checks audit. And because we dropped on all of the other audits that we were working on to prioritize the health and safety checks audit, which was a great, fantastic audit. Um, feel really lucky to have done that audit because it was so fun. Uh, the.
And very important, really, really important for our families as a measure of confidence about our, our processes and safety protocols in our schools.
Yeah, one of the things that after going in all of the different schools that we went into, and I can't remember off the top of my head, I think it was like 43 different schools that we went to. I was shocked at how well behaved the kids were. They were also compliant and, um, so anyway, so that was a great audit. So the next audit that we will get started on, um, right now is the hardship transfers audit. So this is an audit, um, that is to determine, so the purpose of that audit is to determine whether decisions related to hardship transfer petitions are adequately supported and whether the process has a disproportionate or inequitable impact on any specific student community or school. and whether the process has a disproportionate or inequitable impact on any specific student community or school. Um, so the other audit that is already.
Hey, Janice, do you have an estimate of how long that hardship transfer audit is likely to take?
Um, I gonna put a good guess.
Yeah, that's fine. You haven't started your discovery process yet, but um I'll just chime in, Gary and Andrew. Um, this is something that I've, I felt strongly, I agreed that this is a really good area for the district to look into, because I think it's fair to say that we do see some subjectivity and our community perceives some subjectivity in that process. But um we don't have real, you know, we haven't really dived deep into the data on, you know, how many hardship transfer requests we have, where are they coming from, where do they want to go to, what gets accepted, what gets denied? Um, are the same, same, is the same lens applied in consideration? Um, so uh personally, um, I'm glad that this has been approved and is on our docket. I think it's an area that the district does really need to look into.
So I do want to be careful with timing between hardship transfer audit and the ASV audit uh with enrollment, the department. I don't want to interrupt there. A busy time of year, so I need to check in with them to make sure that I'm not going to be interrupting in very, the busiest time of the year for them. So this audit, you know, I really would like to have to you guys by the February um audit committee meeting. That's kind of how I projected it out, that report ready for you in the February meeting. Uh, so that's my estimate, unless it happens to be busy season for enrollment, and then we'll talk about that as we, I'll give you an update each meeting on.
So I, so Janice, I don't know how you typically do this, but you know, I think it would be helpful when you really start to scope out a new audit, just to share with us what you're thinking and what your questions are, your primary areas of focus, so that we can see it upfront and, and if any kind of additional areas or questions occur to us, we can have some, you know, we can have some conversation about that.
Well, that is a great um, a great thing you just said, because that's one of the things I really want to do better about doing, is calling each of the board members upfront, saying, are there any questions on this topic that you want to make sure that I cover in my report? So I can make sure and get that information upfront, so at the end I'm not trying to add or, you know, that I make sure and cover all of the potential questions that may come up related to it. So I will be reaching out to each of you to ask you that question, so I will make notes of all the things you already said, Director Constan, and if you think of any more, uh you'll have an opportunity to tell me that.
Any, any other questions or comments on that uh coming up, hardship transfer?
So the, the audit, the next audit is the ASB or SBF, Student Body Activity Funds or Associated Student Body Funds. The district uses those terms interchangeably sometimes. So um the, the Student Body Activity Funds is um it accounts receipts and disbursements and cash balances of various school district student body funds. Um, their resources are generally uh are primarily generated through by students and student groups, current teacher associations, booster clubs, fundraising activities and donations, and each school is responsible for their own student body funds. Um, so to give you some perspective, I looked at the current year budget book and the projected revenue for student body funds is about eight million. So that actually.
That's a lot of money.
Of how much money we're talking about, which is why we want to look into this, because the um, the it's like each school has their own thing going on, so that's what makes it a lot more risky. So we want to make sure and check on that, make sure there's some formal processes and procedures that are being applied at all schools.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate that. This is the one I, I remember I was skeptical about, because I'm like, how, how much, how much exposure could we really have here? And then you're like, eight million dollars. I was like, oh, okay, yeah, this is a good one to audit.
I knew you were back to that, but asked me that, so I looked it up today, just in case you asked.
Um.
Janice, this is Kate. What was the amount again?
Um, the projected revenue is about eight million.
Wow, okay.
Lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
It's a lot of hard dogs.
So those are the two audits that are already approved. And we will begin working on them right, and we're already starting. So um, we need to get another group of audits approved. So I would like to bring to the committee in our December meeting a list of uh my recommendations for potential audit topics. Last year, we did something very similar and um, you know, some of my ideas, whatever I projected or listed you liked and some didn't, so we just came together and, and agreed on a final audit plan. So that's what I would like to do for you guys at the next time, to give you the list of options, uh tell you why I ranked them and the way in which I ranked them based on what risks, and then let you guys decide on what we move forward with um for the audit plan. Right now.
Yeah, so planning to reach out to the other board members to see if they have ideas.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I, and I reach out to executive leadership as well. So I, I get my list of ideas and I get them all kind of ideas and then I scope them out and talk to different P leadership teams about topics to get more information, to see whether or not it, the idea really lends itself to an audit. There's so many risks everywhere, right? But not all of them could be resolved by a potential audit, so I would like to do that scoping out to make sure the topic really lends itself to an audit and the value could be added by doing an audit. Right now, I have a couple of ideas that have already been suggested to me, so I'll throw those out for you, so you can start thinking about them. And also, hopefully you'll, will get it being scheduled and you can give me additional ideas or elaborate and ask me questions about the ideas that are already out. So the first one is the English second language program audit. I know Director Constan is um really would like that audit, so it's going to be one of the ones I scope out and bring to you guys as an audit often. Another one is um the facility usage audit. This is something that I um I brought forward last year, but it wasn't picked, so it's going to remain on the list. We um.
Doesn't that refer to facility usage is out around civic use of buildings? It's not around our own facility usage, right?
Civic use of buildings. Uh, so specifically, whether, you know, there's a CUB, C U B, which is a civic building waiver that we have a policy on, and so the audit would go into, look at the policy and the rights with the policy and equity anyways. We can talk more about it next time, just the topic. The next topic that has already been mentioned is an audit related to the status of implementation of the GPC.
And that came forward from a community.
Right, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I get.
Sorry, I didn't.
Meeting members as well.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
I didn't quite hear that. I cut out the, the audit of, of what was that again?
The status of the implement, of the GPC. And the GPC is the guaranteed enviable curriculum.
So it's the set of, you know, um, standards, benchmark standards at each grade level that was put together by our chief academic officer last year that previously didn't exist for teachers. So I think it would be like, are the resources there? Are people able to access them? Are they using them? This is, that's pretty important. That's interesting.
Um, what's the thing?
My opinion.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking into that one, and I'll come back with a proposal, you know, based off what I come up with. Um, and then another audit topic that has come to mind is the uh CBO funding of SSA funds. And this actually came up in the audit or in the.
I'm sorry, Janice, CBO funding of what?
Funding with SA, SSA funds, student.
Okay.
Funds. This actually came up in one of the other committee audit or the committee meetings for the charter and alternative school committee. So there's been quite a bit of discussion in that committee about the funding of the CBOs with SSA funds. So while it was brought to my attention as a potential audit topic, it might be resolved through that committee work. Uh, so that may or may not exist.
That's good.
Yeah, that.
Good, what's, what's, you said CBO?
The, so that's our community-based organizations, and actually the um, the conversations that have been going on in that charter and alternative committee only pertain to um our funding of those CBOs that are, you know, run schools that run alternative schools like Rosemary Anderson, and we've got some kids in open school and our, all of our charter schools. Um, but we also run a ton of contracts for our CBOs um just through, through Danny's area, so through our, our RESJ programming. Um, so it's, it's um, it's much more than just has been discussed or considered in that charter and alternative in those conversations.
Um, the, there's, one other topic that's been brought up a couple of different times is related to the equity um of fundraising and allocation of fundraised fundraising funds and.
From our, from our local school foundations.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Those that have already come to me that I'm working on developing and will come back with information on. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what I was working on and hopefully that sparked some ideas in your head, so in chat, you can give me some additional ideas, or you can tell me now, have some ideas.
Andrew and Gary, have you been ruminating on this?
No, I don't have anything specific to add to the list at this point.
Yeah, so just, yeah, just keep, keep thinking about it. Um, I, I guess I would say one kind of bias that I have is that I think for this last spade of audits, we have been um by circumstance really heavy on operational issues. And I'm really anxious to see us dig into some things that have more of a direct impact on student achievement and that look more directly at um potential inequities in our systems and existing inequities in our system. So um I think, you know, we did the health and safety checks because necessity commanded it. We did the ACH because necessity demanded it, really, so um I'd like to see us swing a bit more toward, toward areas that we can more directly correlate to how our kids are doing and where we might not be meeting their needs.
That would be, if you had ideas on what those type of audits could be.
Well, like the ES, the English language learners one is a perfect example of that.
Okay, good.
Okay, so yeah, think about it, gentlemen, please, and talk to people in the community, and then at our next meeting, bring forward any other ideas.
Oh no, I need to talk to you before the next meeting.
Right, right, right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Something to the next meeting, so we'll be chatting before that and then I'll have a.
Got you.
Yeah. Any questions that I thought?
No, sounds good.
Awesome. Um, I think that was everything on my list.
I think that is our full agenda. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the cause? So, so as a governance matter, generally, what we've tried to stay away from is um these redundant meetings where a board subcommittee dives deep into something, and then there's another full presentation for the board. But I do think there's a case to be made for um deviating from that a little bit with the audit committee, just because every single board member um has direct responsibility over this, this function. They report to us, and so I think it's best practice and it, well, it's recommended best practice that the full board keep, you know, a reasonable level of oversight um rather than just delegating to the board committee. Do you guys see that differently or?
No, I, I think that's right, and, and, and it is, I mean, every government I know, the auditors present directly to the full governing body. I do think there's probably a possibility, you know, to um, you know, for this committee to dive deeper on audits and the presentation for the full board can be, can be much, you know, sort of just, just very high level. Um, but I do think that, that, that presentation and, and sort of publicly is, is important.
So I'm hearing that you would like a presentation on the P card audit to the whole board.
Yeah, just, I would, I agree with Andrew, just keep it very brief, the hu- that high-level executive summary. Uh, basically just to prod people to make sure that they have digested the materials before the meeting. And then, you know, like three to five minutes on, these were the highlights, this is where we are. But it also gives us an opportunity to publicly highlight, like in this case, there's a lot of good news, that this function is in fact, um, you know, running smoothly and without, without any of the pitfalls that, you know, people may have been there in the past.
And I'm really sorry that the technology is not working very well, but I don't want to end the meeting without thanking the P card department.
Yes.
Stephen that was uh joined us, but it looks like he's gone now. Um, I wish I would have said it while he was here, but thank you so much for working with us and collaborating with us and providing us feedback and, and really trying to work through complicated situations to find the outcome that's effective. And I also want to make sure and give them credit for all the work that they did um before our audit even started. The secretary.
There was a lot that got resolved even before, yeah.
So in the audit report, at the end of the report, in the appendix B, I put this a couple, a list from Stephen on the things that they had already implemented before we even started, so I want to make sure and um give them credit for so much work that they've been doing over the course of the last couple of years. And I really think that the recommendations that we made this time are to be, to build on that foundation that they've already really stepped in the last couple of years.
Yep, I would suggest highlighting that in your presentation to the board, the work that had already taken place, and then you have an opportunity to thank those people publicly.
My tech will be working for that, sorry.
All right. I think we are close to adjourned. Andrew, Gary, any other thoughts?
No, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Mary Catherine and Janice. Thank you, Karen and Roseanne, if you're still there. See you later, guys.